Yeah. Sorry.
It's a big education for me. Oh, another practice. Every people. That's right. Oh, pretty gross. Yeah, exercise. Can't be close to it. I wasn't hanging for red. You're in the market. Did you fill out an answer form? Very small. People see the pad. That'd be a long time ago. That was brought up. But I have a standard. They still. They still. But he's a risk on my. I don't want your street. Right this side. I'm all sitting in class. I'm sorry, I'm deaf. I can't hear you. Too many. I'm good. We have no time. Yeah, I've got nothing. All of them. Which better was the fact. True or false? I will. I think the second one. I'm such a. It's okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. Officer County Board of Commissioners work session today is Thursday, July the first, two thousand twenty-one. Get right into the new business. First up, we have presentation request to make part-time custodian position a full-time position, facilities director James Talbot. James.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'm here to make a request that we turn one of our part-time custodians here at the courthouse into full-time. A couple of reasons, justifications for it is, is we've been, we have a normal schedule of three. I've only had no more than two for the last six months. We have only had like maybe six applications in the last three months. Out of them, six, we call them, four of them didn't show up. Two of them got a better, better offer. I have an employee now that does a great job. She's been with us for about a year. And she was offered a full-time position and she's supposed to start it on Jan- uh, July the first. So, um, I was hoping that the commissioners would consider making this one individual a full-time employee. She's a great employee and the kind of people we need working for our county. So, um, we do have the money for remainder of this year in our budget to take care of the expenses for her to be full-time this year. And, uh, would like to, uh, uh, hope that the commissioners would consider it and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for James.
You said July first. This is July first.
Yes.
So is she leaving today?
No, I, I, I actually had a talk with her. She loves working here.
Okay.
She's willing to take another week. And the other thing I'd like to ask is we would need to vote on this tonight if at all possible. So she was offered another position at North Georgia College.
Yeah.
How many hours is she working?
They worked, my part-timers worked twenty-eight hours a piece and there's three of them when you have them. And believe me, the full-time work, there's plenty of work in this building to take, to, to justify the full-time positions, more than enough. So we're, we kind of have to take a guy out of our maintenance department on the outside to come in and fill in for that position when they're vacant.
You know, and James, uh, has had the same problem that's a lot of our departments have, like public works, public safety. James had the same problem here with, uh, this position. It's a constant turnover. And so, uh, doing this to a full-time position and create some stability would be a good thing.
Well, you've got just two people to handle this whole bill.
I've got a full staff of part-time with the three. One is the common areas that does all of them. And I got two, one that does two floors and another one does the other two. But I hadn't had three people in six months. One will come and one will leave. So we've actually had seven people come and go since the first of, uh, two thousand twenty. And this was one position here.
Other questions for James? Y'all good with moving that to the vote session?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, James. Next up, we have presentation of timber harvest ordinance update, planning and development director Jameson Kim. Jameson.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners.
They stopped and filled it up, charged it up. So I'd just like to do a little research, get the finance. How many person and some other department that the county manager look into this.
And I'll add to that. I sent through a Zoom meeting had to do with electric vehicles the other day. I'd gotten a call and they wanted me to sit through that Zoom meeting, which I did. They talked about the the different electric vehicles and the different savings there were associated with some of those. But I think it's worth the board and the departments taking a look at that to see exactly what's out there, what the cost of it is, what the savings could be. And as Tim said, you know, we have departments that could drive electric vehicles. We have lots of citizens who drive electric vehicles now and some charging stations around and about would be a good thing for them. I know, like he said, there's a couple over at the Alton Mall, but when somebody comes there and plugs into one of them stays there for five hours shopping. And then the next person has a difficulty trying to get theirs charged. So if we had a few more around and about at that Zoom meeting. The city was involved in that as well. And I think the schools looking at some stuff as well. And they're trying to reschedule another one, I think, for like July the sixteenth reference another meeting to talk about it. So I think it's well worth looking into and finding out all the facts. Any other discussion? Any questions for Tim or me? All right, we'll move on to the county manager report.
Thank you Chairman. Good afternoon Commissioners. County offices will be closed Monday, July the fifth in observance of the Fourth of July holiday. Comprehensive plan survey for citizens wasn't made available online early this week. As you know, the county is in the process of updating its comp plan, which what we use as a kind of a guide to the land use and character of the community for the future. You may recall last year when the GMRC did their survey, they actually had they had record number from Dawson County as far as participants in that survey was over close to six hundred. Surveys and and kudos to Jameson and his his team for putting together a survey and getting that out, getting it online. And and out there for the citizens to make their recommendations and see what's going on. HR's Christie Finley graduated from the Certified Human Resources Manager course. This course is a three and a half to four year program offered by GLGPA. Christie graduated last week after finishing her final project and was presented with her certificate of human resources manager designation. So congratulations to Christie and and both her and and Erica have done a fantastic job with everything that's been going on. So want to recognize both of them this evening. In addition to that, Christie and the Dawson County Safety and Wellbeing Committee are putting the finishes touches on their summer fund safety project together. Today had lots of employees out. You may have got a little orange bag that's got a few things in it for you. And so each full time and part time employee will receive a tote containing the sun and skin safety information and items such as a UV protective hat, sunglasses and sunscreen among others. So full time and part time, just over four hundred bags. Congratulate them and then I'll let Brad say something on.
Come on up here, Brad. Come on up. Dove tailing on that. Today's July first, so we've switched over to our new health benefit plan with Cigna. And that closes out the Wise and Well DC Health Rewards that we ran last year. We had a hundred and twenty one participants paid out about nine thousand nine hundred dollars, about eighty one dollars a person. Here's my check will be passed out tomorrow. I think that's a new fishing rod. But it's for the employees to use as they seem fit. As a side note, our claims have gone down in the last couple of months. So that's a good thing. And we want to recognize this for putting this plan together. They were in there putting bags together this morning, Erica as well. So it's a team effort for all of us.
Thank you, Brad.
And that would conclude my report.
Questions of the county manager. Thank you, Dave.
Yes.
County attorney report.
No, sir, but I would like to request an executive session.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion to go in executive session? Some motion by Commissioner Fosse, second by Commissioner Gaines, discussion.
And just to clarify, that'll be for litigation purposes.
Litigation, okay. Any vote coming out of it?
I do not.
Okay, all in favor, please vote or all just vote period. And that is approved for oh, we will take about five minutes and then we'll meet an executive session in the back. I had to look for David. I had to find him over there. I know it. It's weird.